All right, Kevin, you want to call the meeting to order for the planning board? You've got to turn your mic on. You've got to turn your mic on the screen. You've got to turn the mic on your screen.
They said yes, I will be happy to.
There you go.
Meeting to order for the planning board, although I seem to be the only one in attendance at the moment.
No, your entire board is actually here, believe it or not.
Oh, okay, great.
You just can't see them. They're all here. All right.
I'll open up the Board of Selectmen meeting also, and all five of us are here. Including Leah, who's there.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I'll do it from the document. So Paige has been working with Town Council over the past several days. And you've seen, does everybody have the work product? I think everybody has it now, right? Everybody has the latest version of it? Okay, great. So this document has been reviewed multiple times. The timing of this couldn't have been better because the state just came out, the governor came out with an executive order 35 just the other day that allows alcohol to be served on the outside premises as well. I'm informed that there was also a House and Senate bill that actually passed earlier or later this afternoon that also just reinforced the same thing that the governor had put out. So it's basically passed all three houses and all legislative branches at this point, which is good news. The one thing that was in there was there's no longer requirement for hearing for alcohol service. It just can be handled by sending something to the ABCC advising them of the change. So the document that you have before you tonight, which provides the new regulations, essentially says that we can go forward with the review process internally. The application gets submitted by the individual who wants to have the additional space, outdoor space, and then we circulate it to our various departments for review. And then if everything meets requirements, the insurance requirements, et cetera, that I have the ability to sign off on it, which will speed up the process and get people open as soon as possible. I think the only area that requires a lot more consideration is anybody utilizing a sidewalk. Then Chris becomes a player in that process. And then the Board of Selectmen has to take a further look at that as well. All right, so, and does anybody have any questions about the procedure, the regulations? Paige, is there anything you want to add at this point?
No, no, I just want to thank everybody for coming together so quickly. It seems like we are going to be, like Bill said, poised at the nick of time. I want to thank Leah and Ron, the two different boards, Doc, everybody really rallied. Kevin, I mean, the groups really worked together. So to be clear, there's two tiers, and I just want to explain that. So Tier One is for any outdoor, temporary outdoor seating that will occur on private property. And that's sort of the thing that just requires sign off, and Bill can issue the sign off once it's vetted by all the departments. Obviously, the Board of Health, inspections, and fire play a big role. The Tier Two is where Chris gets involved, and that's why we invited him to tonight's meeting because we might have a few minutes to discuss it. We're not sure what Tier Two is going to involve, you know, other communities that talked about closing roadways or using sidewalks. So we're trying to be responsive to that. I will say we have not received any requests to date for the use of public space. And one important caveat that Gabby just caught as well tonight is that if you are serving alcohol, you cannot do it if it's not contiguous to your property. So if someone was trying to use some, you know, land that wasn't necessarily right adjacent to their building under unique circumstance, if they were seeking alcohol service, that would not be permitted under the revised ABCC rights. So that might be less of incentive. But again, I think the process is pretty clear. We're not alone, but we're certainly on the cutting edge of it. We've also attached an application form for review, and Town Council prepared a license agreement. That would be used, again, only in the event of Tier Two, when public property is involved. So I think it's best if people have questions, we go straight to that. Or if we want to talk a little bit to Chris about sort of what would matter when you're talking about the public realm and how to make sure that we have some guidance because we don't want to have to wait two weeks for a Board of Selectmen meeting to advise someone. We'd like to sort of get some parameters or, you know, let's just talk it through. I don't think we all have the answers, but it's starting to think about what might matter when we're taking those considerations into mind.
I do want to add one more thing, which I think is important, is that the governor has issued this as a sort of emergency temporary measure so that anyone who is actually looking to build a permanent space onto their property and for use for long term beyond November, which is, I guess, this rule only goes in place, this order only goes in place until November or until the governor removes the restriction. So if anybody who has that wants to do that, and this is probably a great time to just test it and see if it works. If it works temporarily, then you may see other applications for more permanent. But then the permanent process actually goes through the normal channels. So you just want to be clear about that.
Example of that is Union Straw.
Union Straw, if they want an actual permanent, they can actually, they can do, actually do it two ways. They can do the temporary measure, which will put them in place immediately. And then secondly, they can then look at to do it more permanently and continue to do that through normal channels. And that could happen over the next several months if they want to.
Oh, they actually chose to go with the permanent.
They're going to do permanent, okay, great.
I think that's going to be on our agenda.
Okay, then, then fine.
Well, again, though, Bill and I discussed this earlier, and we think that Union Straw is a unique circumstance because they, again, may have been talking about doing a long term one for a little while now. And obviously, this has incentivized them to do it. Obviously, we prefer them to do it permanently in a way, rather than taking up a parking lot because that brings on another whole host of issues to deal with, but we don't. But I think in this instance, since we think Union Straw can come in, they're doing it permanently, but they're probably going to want to, for the liquor license part of it, do the expedited, at least sign off, because there's no real loss to it. There's no fee. They've already been vetted by planning board and building and whatnot. So really, they'll probably use the temporary provision to get the liquor license sooner rather than later. But then they're going to, in the meantime, be working with the ABCC and the town to do it permanently after November 1st because their patio will remain beyond November 1st.
Paige, has the planning, excuse me, the Health Department looked into this at all?
Yes.
Have they seen this document?
They have.
Are they going to, have any pushback, any questions? Are they going to be able to meet this timeline?
They seem open to it. I mean, they have their own, we talked about a checklist at last meeting. And fortunately, the governor and his group did that all for us. So I did check with Pauline, and she got these regs, Eric got these regs. They were fine with them. They don't step on any of their regulations, and they will just go about doing their, you know, their checklist as provided by the state. And I'm not going to lie, I mean, I do think that it's going to tax, you know, Board of Health a little bit more and all of us, you know, depending on the workload that comes in. But again, this whole situation has been taxing, and I think, you know, as evidence, we're all committed to helping out any of these businesses, restaurants, retail. So I think we just have to find a way to do it. And the Board of Health has certainly been partnering with us all along. They've been very, very amenable to working with us.
Thank you.
Next, next order of business is?
Well, I guess with, you know, talking a little bit, since Chris is on board here now, talking about public property, the only place I can think of is downtown and maybe Foxborough House of Pizza might be the only one that's involved with private property, whether it's in back on the public parking or in front. So unless somebody else can think of someplace elsewhere, private property. Just maybe, Chris, what's your thoughts on something like that downtown?
I mean, it was, it was really, when Paige sent this to me, I was really looking for guidance from the two boards that are involved with it to see what the thought of the town is on this. You know, it's something where, you know, along Mechanic Street, there's, you know, a sidewalk and street parking, street parking on both sides of the street. You know, is it something that the boards and the town is looking to, you know, let the restaurants utilize the sidewalk and then close off, you know, the parking spaces on that side as a temporary sidewalk? Similar to what Paige had sent out, that Norwood had kind of drafted some sketches that what they might propose. You know, I think we're at a point right now where we know the parking spaces aren't getting used every day, all day. But we hope that in time, as restaurants are able to open, that those will be utilized. So it's really just, for me, it's a matter of what the town wants to see. I don't want to just make a decision that, yes, sidewalks can be used, and we're going to close parking spaces without the opinion of the boards that are involved.
Well, I think, and again, I'm using Foxborough House of Pizza as my example. I think allowing him, if he wants to put in a petition, to use the sidewalk and then take up about, I don't know, what, maybe six of those parking spots for a walkway, I think would be a perfect solution, just to throw it out there, see what everybody else's thought is on that.
If he applies, if he applies.
If he applies, right. We don't, we don't know. Hopefully, he's watching now and knows about this, but.
I think anything you do like that has to be contiguous to the establishment.
Right.
You know, puts up on Mechanic Street or something like that, I don't see happening. I don't see vendors going out to the sidewalk on a Mechanic Street just to serve.
No.
So question on insurance. So if you look at the insurance that's in, you know, the original document, it kind of talks about Tier One. There's a lot of specifics, you know, a million dollars here, injury or death, one person, $2 million injury or death. When you get to the agreement with the Tier Two stuff, none of that is in here. And it basically says, and at least a million dollars. That's all it says. So that has to get tightened up, I would assume, because we're, the liability, if it's on town-owned property, is so much greater, especially if it's a sidewalk or whatever. So if we're approving this tonight, I'm fine with everything on the Tier One 100% because it's locked and loaded. The Tier Two, I think, still needs a lot of work to do.
I would agree.
So I would not want, I, I'm not opposed to Tier Two exploring it more and expediting when we get it right, but, you know, at least a million dollars, that's the insurance requirement, that doesn't cut it for me.
Well, if I may say, I think the insurance applies to either Tier, I know the insurance is intended to apply to both Tier One and Tier Two. So that million dollar limit, that Section D insurance applies to any temporary outdoor dining, whether Tier One or Tier Two.
Does it specifically say that if it's on town-owned property in the big dock?
Well, it says prior to opening any temporary outdoor dining area. That's always, I mean, it basically, the way I read that is that it doesn't matter where it is. If you're doing outdoor dining, you have to have this in place. This is meant to cover all applications.
Can I ask a question? Typically, they already have, they already have insurance that covers both the building and all of their property. So is this in addition to that? Or is this just, I mean, to open a business, you need to have insurance?
It may, it may need to be clarified with the insurance company or the agent, well, obviously, the company who's providing the coverage, that they, that the area properly is properly defined is including this area as well. So that may be more clarification than anything. Because you're right, the coverage is already there to begin with.
Right, but now they're just adding.
Right, so you're just going to want to copy, you're going to need to see a copy of their policy. They should have to provide proof.
You gotta turn your mic on. You gotta turn your mic on the screen. You gotta turn the mic on your screen.
They said, yes, I will be happy to.
There we go.
Meeting to order for the planning board, although I seem to be the only one in attendance at the moment.
No, your entire board is actually here, believe it or not.
Oh, okay, great.
You just can't see them. They're all here. All right.
I'll open up the Board of Selectment meeting also when all five of us are here. Including Leah, who's there.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so I'll do it from the document. So Paige has been working with Town Council over the past several days. And you've seen, does everybody have the work product? I think everybody has it now, right? Everybody, you guys the latest version of it? Okay, great. So this document has been reviewed multiple times. The timing of this couldn't have been better. Because the state just came out, the governor came out with an executive order thirty-five just the other day that allows alcohol to be served on the outside premises as well. I'm informed that there was also a House and Senate bill that actually passed earlier or later this afternoon that also just reinforced the same thing that the governor had put out. So it's basically passed all three houses and all legislative branches at this point, which is good news. The one thing that was in there was there's no longer requirement for hearing for alcohol service. It just can be handled by sending something to the ABCC advising them with the change. So the document that you have before you tonight, which provides the new regulations, essentially says that we can go forward with the review process internally. The application gets submitted by the individual who wants to have the additional space, outdoor space. And then we circulate it to our various departments for review. And then if everything meets requirements, the insurance requirements, et cetera, that I have the ability to sign off on it. Which will speed up the process and get people open as soon as possible. I think the only area that requires a lot more consideration is anybody utilizing a sidewalk. Then Chris becomes a player in that process. And then the Board of Selectment has to take a further look at that as well. All right, so, and does anybody have any questions about the procedure, the regulations? Paige, is there anything you want to add at this point?
No, no, I just want to thank everybody for coming together so quickly. It seems like we are going to be, like Bill said, poised at the nick of time. I want to thank Leah and Ron, the two different boards, Doc, everybody really rallied. Kevin, I mean, the groups really worked together. So to be clear, there's two tiers, and I just want to explain that. So tier one is for any outdoor, temporary outdoor seating that will occur on private property. And that's sort of the thing that just requires sign off. And Bill can issue the sign off once it's vetted by all the departments. Obviously, the Board of Health, inspections and fire play a big role. The tier two is where Chris gets involved. And that's why we invited him to tonight's meeting, because we might have a few minutes to discuss it. We're not sure what tier two is going to involve, you know, other communities that talked about closing roadways or using sidewalks. So we're trying to be responsive to that. I will say, we have not received any requests to date for the use of public space. And one important caveat that Gabby just caught as well tonight is that if you are serving alcohol, you cannot do it if it's not contiguous to your property. So if someone was trying to use some, you know, land that wasn't necessarily right adjacent to their building under unique circumstance, if they were seeking alcohol service, that would not be permitted under the revised ABCC rights. So that might be less of incentive. But again, I think the process is pretty clear. We're not alone, but we're certainly on the cutting edge of it. We've also attached an application form for review. And Town Council prepared a license agreement. That would be used, again, only in the event of tier two, when public property is involved. So I think it's best if people have questions, we get straight to that. Or if we want to talk a little bit to Chris about sort of what would matter when you're talking about the public realm and how to make sure that we have some guidance. Because we don't want to have to wait two weeks for a Board of Selectment meeting to advise someone. We'd like to sort of get some parameters or, you know, let's just talk it through. I don't think we all have the answers, but it's starting to think about what might matter when we're taking those considerations into mind.
I do want to add one more thing, which I think is important, is that the governor has issued this as a sort of emergency temporary measure. So that anyone who is actually looking to build a permanent space onto their property and for use for long term beyond November, which is, I get this rule only goes in place, this order only goes in place until November, or until the governor removes the restriction. So if anybody who has that, wants to do that, and this is probably a great time to just test it and see if it works. If it works temporarily, then you may see other applications for more permanent. But then, the permanent process actually goes through the normal channels. So you just want to be clear about that.
Example of that is Union Straw.
Union Straw, if they want an actual permanent, they can actually, they can do, actually do it two ways. They can do the temporary measure, which will put them in place immediately. And then secondly, they can then look at to do it more permanently and continue to do that through normal channels. And that could happen over the next several months if they wanted to.
Oh, they actually chose to go with the permanent.
They're going to do permanent, okay, great.
I think that's going to be on our agenda.
Okay, then, then fine.
Well, again, though, Bill and I discussed this earlier, and we think that Union Straw is a unique circumstance. Because they, again, they've been talking about doing a long-term one for a little while now. And obviously, this has incentivized them to do it. Obviously, we prefer them to do it permanently in a way, rather than taking up a parking lot, because that brings on another whole host of issues to deal with, but we don't. But I think in this instance, since we think Union Straw can come in, they're doing it permanently, but they're probably going to want to, for the liquor license part of it, do the expedited, at least sign off. Because there's no real loss to it, there's no fee. They've already been vetted by Planning Board and Building and whatnot. So really, they'll probably use the temporary provision to get the liquor license sooner rather than later. But then, they're going to, in the meantime, be working with the ABCC and the town to do it permanently after November first, because their patio will remain beyond November first.
Paige, has the planning, excuse me, the Health Department looked into this at all?
Yes.
Have they seen this document?
They have.
Are they gonna, have any pushback, any questions? Are they going to be able to meet this timeline?
They seem open to it. I mean, they have their own, we talked about a checklist at last meeting. And fortunately, the governor and his group did that all for us. So I did check with Pauline. And she got these regs, Eric got these regs, they were fine with them. They don't step on any of their regulations, and they will just go about doing their, you know, their checklist as provided by the state. And I'm not going to lie, I mean, I do think that it's going to tax, you know, Board of Health a little bit more, and all of us, you know, depending on the workload that comes in. But again, this whole situation has been taxing. And I think, you know, as evidenced, we're all committed to helping out any of these businesses, restaurants, retail. So I think we just have to find a way to do it. And the Board of Health has certainly been partnering with us all along. They've been very, very amenable to working with us.
Thank you.
Next order of business is?
Well, I guess with, you know, talking a little bit, since Chris is on board here now, talking about public property, the only place I can think of is downtown and maybe Foxborough House of Pizza. Might be the only one that's involved with private property, whether it's in back on the public parking or in front. So unless someone else can think of someplace elsewhere, private property. Just maybe, Chris, what's your thoughts on something like that downtown?
I mean, it was, it was really, when Paige sent this to me, I was really looking for guidance from the two boards that are involved with it to see what the thought of the town is on this. You know, it's something where, you know, along Mechanic Street, there's, you know, a sidewalk and street parking. Street parking on both sides of the street. You know, is it something that the boards in the town is looking to, you know, let the restaurants utilize the sidewalk? And then close off, you know, the parking spaces on that side as a temporary sidewalk. Similar to what Paige had sent out, that Norwood had kind of drafted some sketches, what they might propose. You know, I think we're at a point right now where we know the parking spaces aren't getting used every day, all day. But we hope that in time, as restaurants are able to open, that those will be utilized. So it's really just, for me, it's a matter of what the town wants to see. I don't want to just make a decision that, yes, sidewalks can be used, and we're going to close parking spaces without the opinion of the boards that are involved.
Well, I think, and again, I'm using Foxborough House of Pizza as my example. I think allowing him, if he wants to put in a petition to use the sidewalk and then take up about, I don't know, what, maybe six of those parking spots for a walkway, I think would be a perfect solution, just to throw it out there, see what everybody else's thought is on that.
If he applies, if he applies.
If he applies, right. We don't, we don't know. Hopefully, he's watching now and knows about this, but.
I think anything you do like that has to be contiguous to the establishment. You know, puts up on Mechanic Street or something like that, I don't see happening. I don't see vendors going out to the sidewalk on Mechanic Street just to serve. No.
So question on insurance. So if you look at the insurance that's in, you know, the original document, it kind of talks about tier one. There's a lot of specifics, you know, a million dollars here, injury or death, one person. Two million dollars, injury or death. When you get to the agreement with the tier two stuff, none of that is in here. And it basically says, and at least a million dollars, that's all it says. So that has to get tightened up, I would assume. Because we're, the liability, if it's on town-owned property, is so much greater, especially if it's a sidewalk or whatever. So if we're approving this tonight, I'm fine with everything on the tier one a hundred percent, because it's locked and loaded. The tier two, I think, still needs a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I would agree.
So I would not want, I'm not opposed to tier two exploring it more and expediting when we get it right. But, you know, at least a million dollars, that's the insurance requirement, that doesn't cut it for me.
Well, if I may say, I think the insurance applies to either tier. I know the insurance is intended to apply to both tier one and tier two. So that million dollar limit, that section D insurance applies to any temporary outdoor dining, whether tier one or tier two.
Does it specifically say that if it's on town-owned property in the big dock?
Well, it says, prior to opening any temporary outdoor dining area. So, I mean, it basically, the way I read that is that it doesn't matter where it is. If you're doing outdoor dining, you have to have this in place. This is meant to cover all applications.
Could I ask a question? Typically, they already have, they already have insurance that covers both the building and all of their property. So is this in addition to that? Or is this just, I mean, to open a business, you need to have insurance?
It may need to be clarified with the insurance company or the agent, well, obviously, the company who's providing the coverage, that the, that the area properly is properly defined is including this area as well. So that may be more clarification than anything. Because you're right, the coverage is already there to begin with.
Right, but now they're just having.
So you're just going to want to copy, you're going to need to see a copy of their policy. They should have to provide proof with the coverage, like the policy coverage, that that is, that the outside is covered as well as the inside. And that's something they can either do through the agent or the carrier, or they just pull out their insurance policy and read it.
Well, certificates are very common, they hand it out every day. So the town would just receive a certificate stating the value, the coverage, and the town would be named as additionally insured. It's common, we do it as contractors every day.
That's the piece that changes here, the additional insured. Anytime a contractor pulls a permit for a street opening, the town gets named on the certificate as additionally insured. That's what covers the town in case an accident happens within the public right of way. That piece is important for anything in the public right of way.
Right, which would only be phase two. So for phase one, from an insurance standpoint, all they would need to do is produce that proof of insurance coverage that includes the outside. We don't have to be named as a secondary insured. Because they're not coming onto the right of way in phase one.
We're not impacted in that.
Yeah. The town has no bearing. It's tier two that is my concern, especially how it's written in the secondary agreement for tier two. It's very ambiguous.
But as long as the insurance is covering tier one as well as tier two, we should be good.
Right, yeah.
Well, and I want to just clarify that the application form makes it clear that an insurance certificate is required for any application. So that's a given. And that would be part of our checkoff. You know, we would be verifying that the insurance certificate included the premise, you know, the expanded premise is outside. And then if we were getting to a tier two, we would also be checking to ensure the language was appropriate. So it is a requirement to submit. I mean, we could certainly add, you know, a sentence at the beginning of the insurance section to say for something to the effect of, you know, for both tiers. But I do think it's pretty clear in there.
I agree with Paige, since it's in section D, you know, it's overarching before you get into the approval process.
So I would suggest then, on the application, the town of Foxborough, the temporary one for public way, that we add something more than at least a million dollars. I mean, that just doesn't seem like it's tight enough.
Well, we could even just say, instead of at least a million, coverage as per section D of the.
However, yeah, however it's worded. And the only reason I'm questioning that is if somebody's sitting on the sidewalk in front of any establishment, it's town-owned property, a car drives up on the sidewalk, wipes them out, you know, I'm just looking to protect the town as best as possible.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're going to be protecting both tiers.
So you can just say, as required by the procedure?
As required by section D of the policy. Did you get that, Paige?
The additionally insured.
I did.
In section ten of the agreement?
Section ten, and we'll also add in that the town would be added as an additional insured.
Yes.
Under tier two.
Particularly as relates to the right of way for any public right of ways.
I think under tier one, you could, let the car drives into this temporary dining area in a parking lot. You violated your own site plan review, and so you could have some liability there.
So let's do additionally insured, Paige, across the board. It doesn't cost the policy holder anything to do that.
Did you want to say something?
I do.
Soon to be leaving Selectment, keep dragging back.
I think we need to clarify the expiration. Because the temporary program expires on November first, 2020, unless extended by the Board of Selectment. The board only have that authority if the ABC order has been extended. So the language should be consistent with the ABCC. So it should probably just say, the temporary program expires on November first, 2020, or until the order is rescinded.
So the order is rescinded, right, until the order is rescinded.
Otherwise, you'll have people coming to the board asking for an extension.
Yeah, so just say until the order is rescinded, period. Don't put a date there.
So do you want November first, or do you want it to say, this temporary program expires when the order is rescinded?
By the Commonwealth.
It should be consistent with the language that's in the.
Right, well, November first is in the statute today.
Right, but.
The governor's thing runs through November first, so that's where that date came from. The council actually added this one. But we could say, this temporary program expires on November first, or when the order is rescinded by the Commonwealth.
So the actual language from the, that was issued by the ABCC is, please be aware that all extended, expanded premises approved pursuant to this order are only effective through November first, 2020, or until the order is rescinded, whichever is sooner, and revert to their original licensed premises on that date.
But isn't that just for the alcohol? So technically, let's say someone wanted to keep dining outside in November, they could still dine outside, which is what these regulations are for, without the alcohol.
I think, I think what the, I think the new regs, Leah, actually speak to the zoning piece too. They address both the alcohol and the zoning piece. I just thought the Town Council prior to this meeting, and he just, he noted that. He said they basically waived the zoning requirements and the alcohol requirements in the same legislation. And that was, that just came out this afternoon, late this afternoon. So that's why they just clarified that.
Yeah, we should keep them the same.
Yes, absolutely.
Could add the same language right in there if we needed to. Yep, good point.
And then, you know, Doc, I don't have any questions, but kind of more logistics stuff. So, you know, you can take that later, we can wrap up questions and then come back to me.
What, you have something to say now?
It's more about, like, kind of logistics.
May as well bring it up.
Okay, so obviously, I've looked at this a lot, Paige, and sorry to come at you with a feedback on the form when I've had it for a little bit. But I do think we should add where the form is to be returned to, either an email address. Like, I think there should be an email, a phone, and a fax number on the form. And then, you know, again, a lot of us pay attention to this, but, you know, you know, some restaurant owner on Central Street is busy with everything going on. They may not follow the Board of Selectment's meeting agenda. So I think we do need to send this out, or post this on the webpage. And maybe it's email it out to the restaurants, or, you know, just make sure that people are aware of it. You know, the big guys, like at Patriot Place may be aware, and others. But, you know, some of the smaller ones may not be as aware. So I think we should just kind of come up with some sort of like cover letter, Paige, that we can maybe send out an email, and I'm happy to do that, just since we've kind of now gathered the email addresses for most of them. However, we can help get this out in front of people. You know, even a day goes a long way in planning right now for some of these restaurants. An effective date is the only other thing. So they may think they can start doing this Friday. You know, we probably want to make sure that they know that, or, you know, if they're looking for a specific effective date, that's the only other thing on the application that I thought of. But otherwise, Paige has done a great job vetting these with everyone. You know, Ron, I know, went to police and fire, and even some restaurant owners. So I think that, looking at other towns and everything, I think, you know, Paige, you pulled this together really quick and did a great job.
Thank you.
So just to be clear about the logistics and to follow up on Leah's point. So if this gets approved tonight, somebody could apply, somebody, I know one, at least one or two have actually expressed interest in applying right of way. So we, the person could apply, we start the process, we get the word out immediately to all the different departments. And we try to turn it around as quickly as we can, so that they can, because time is important here. Obviously, people want to get their businesses reopened. And we want them to get reopened, no question about that. So that's it, there's no further steps. Is that clear? We all clear on that?
Nope. Yeah, Bill, you maybe, you might want some kind of communication that goes back out to them, just to think through, you know, because this is new for everyone.
Yeah.
So something that comes out from the office, you know, with like a checklist on their end, or, you know, one that's effective, things like that.
Put it on the website. Bill, the.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with them.
Okay.
We can do outreach.
Yeah, we'll do outreach tomorrow.
Bill, the applications that you foresee coming in a short period of time are both tier one type applications?
I believe so, yes.
Because I think we're ready to go with tier one.
Right.
And there might be some, you know, some test runs that we'll have to do that might result in some revisions. But other than that, it looks good. But tier two, do we anticipate having different subdivisions of tier two, where you use sidewalk only, street and sidewalk? Are there certain streets that we want to limit to sidewalk only and will not issue a permit for the street? Hours that we would use it? Some of these decisions, of course, would be based on the amount of traffic and the time for the application, the day of the week. And it's almost as if we should, if we don't list some specifics, we want to mention that perhaps in a preamble of some sort, so that an applicant knows what we're likely to look for and ask for. It might be more of a case-by-case situation. It's certainly going to be a case-by-case. But maybe, it being a case-by-case, maybe we try to cover that in a preamble. Maybe there's a street we want to not entertain the idea of using a portion of the street.
Well, John, the only street that any of us can think of that it could possibly be is Central Street. And I did speak to Chief Grace. Some of the other communities are closing a section of road for a period of time on a given day to allow the restaurants to use it. We would have a great opportunity with Liberty and Wall Street that we could circumvent the center of town very easily. And, but then, we're still only talking two, possibly three entities. And none of them have come forward at this point in time, so.
And I think that's why we have.
We have the parking lot behind them too. So that could be something we could talk about, you know, which side of the building? Is it the parking lot side, which doesn't affect traffic and sidewalks, or the street side?
And I think that's why we have tier two, so that extra level of vetting. Because I think we're only talking two or three establishments at most.
At most.
And I think it's only one.
My only concern, just a thought, I had thought about the parking lot as well, Leah, is that parking lot is in, you know, horrible shape, just overall. And just from a, just from a liability standpoint, that may not, it may be better to consider the street when and if we get, you know, an application.
And just to clarify, I'm looking at that list of the restaurants that I referenced earlier. So I think you are correct that there are the three restaurants, or two, on Central Street. And then also Primo is maybe another one. So, you know, I don't believe that they have much land, maybe that back parking lot. Again, I don't know exactly. But that is one, the only other one besides the Commons and Gunther Tooties and Sam's that I can think of, looking at this list quick, that may run into that issue.
South Street Pizza.
South Street as well.
Yeah, South Street, right.
And Sal's and Mel's.
Sal's and Mel's, those on Wall Street.
I picture breakfast on the sidewalk on some Saturday morning. You know, originally, I was thinking all, you know, nighttime. But then, think about like a Saturday or Sunday morning, you know, dining out there. I mean, there might be some innovative ways to, between Gunther Tooties and the Commons, you could have a nice little breakfast thing going on there. But of course, we'd have to be sensitive to the nail salons and the hair salons and Cindy's. So there's a lot of variables there. But I think, you know, hopefully with Chris's guidance, you know, we could figure something out on that. And again, remember, you can't have more seats than you could. So like, something like Primo's, I don't know how many seats they already have, but, you know, there is a limit to how many seats you can have.
Are we good to make a motion, Doc? Do you want to?
Yes.
I don't know if Ed has it or if I'm.
Good, yes, go ahead, Leah.
Okay, so I move to approve the temporary outdoor dining regulations as amended and discussed in this meeting.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Mr.
And I can tell you that the restaurants that I've spoken to greatly appreciate this. So I think they're really noticing that Foxborough is stepping up. I can tell you, my town, my own town is not doing that. So, good job, Foxborough.
I also, we got a nice compliment today from one of the establishments as well, to say that they really appreciate the fact that we're doing this. I did note that the chairman of the Board of Health has joined the meeting. I don't know, you want to share anything, Mr. Chairman?
No, I thank you for inviting me. Nobody sent me the link, so, I just got the link just now. I apologize for showing up late, but that's the best I could do. I applaud everyone for all your efforts, Paige, the incredible effort. But, yeah, we're excited, this will be good.
Great.
You know, we got some work to do, but that's okay. It's all good.
It's all good.
It's all good.
You guys don't have to vote.
I don't believe so.
No.
This is your right, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, great, thank you, everybody, for showing up. Everybody, everybody made it.
And Paige, if you can get this posted and send the link out, and then, you know, maybe we can start that outreach tomorrow to some of the restaurants that we haven't been in touch with yet.
Good, give a thumbs up.
Accept a motion to.
Make a motion to close the Board of Selectment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll even be gone before Ed Card gets here.
They either wiped out a room.
Come back to where I was for three years prior.